So again, welcome to the 2019 Meet the Candidates for the South Lion City Council Election in November. Thank you so much for coming. So first of all, let's thank the candidates for being here. We have Lisa Dilg.
Close?
Dilg.
Dilg. We have Jim Hamady.
Hamady.
Hamady. Better? Am I closer?
Great.
Okay. Thank you. Dana Johnston. Steve Kennedy. Amber King. Margaret Kurzweil. Lori Mosier. Close, Lori?
Perfect.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. So these are the seven candidates who are vying for the three open seats on our city council in November's election. So we're so excited to have this opportunity where we can meet, talk, listen to the people who are running, and so we can make the best choices that we can. Okay, now I want to thank everyone who was involved in putting this together. Phil Allman, who is, can you see Phil? He's the Consumer Experience Director of The Observer and Eccentric Newspapers. He'll be our moderator tonight. We want to thank the League of Women Voters Oakland area. There's two here. Bridgette is here. She's our official timer. Linda is back here, collecting the cards. I want to thank my colleagues, library staff, for setting all of this up. Tracy Robinson, Luke Irvin, Vaughn Chester's, Kathy Hutchinson. And as I said, this forum is being streamed live right now via our Facebook page. The event is also being recorded by South Lion Cable Channel 19. Now, that recording will be available over our website, over YouTube, and the local cable 19 station. I get it all? Okay. I want to thank the South Lion Herald for covering the event, and I want to thank WHMI, 93.5 FM for also covering. Thank you, media. And I want to thank all of you for being here tonight, for exercising your right to be an informed voter and participating in the democratic process. So now, let's take, I'll give this to Phil.
Thank you, Donna. Again, I'm Phil Allman with the South Lion Herald. Fancy title, but ultimately, I'm the editor of the Herald. I'll be the moderator tonight. I'll just kind of go over basically how the evening is going to go. We will open with a chance for each of the candidates to introduce themselves and explain, you know, why they're running for council and their qualifications for running for council. After that, each of the candidates had three questions that they were given in advance, that they had prepared statements for, and they'll, we'll ask each of those three questions. Following that, we will go to audience questions. So if anyone has a question, put it on one of the sheets, wave it up in the air, and either Donna or Linda will pick it up. The only caveat is, the question has to be to all of the candidates. You cannot direct questions to a single candidate because every candidate has to have the opportunity to answer. We have a timekeeper up front, so she will be making sure that all the candidates know how much time they have for each of the questions. And if they go past it, I'm going to start speaking over you, so you can no longer continue. So wrap up your, as the time ends, wrap up your answer. As far as answering the questions, we're just going to go in order alphabetically. So, you know, the first question, Lisa will go first, but then for the second question, Jim will go first, we'll go down, and then Lisa would end, and so on and so forth. That way, every candidate will have a chance to go first, last, and in the middle. And on that note, we will begin. Thank you very much, everyone, for being here, and good luck. So to start off with, just have each candidate, I'm going to read you the actual, what it says. You have three minutes to introduce yourself, present your qualifications, and why you're running for the city council. Lisa will begin with you.
Seventeen years ago, when we were looking for a place to raise our kids, we chose South Lion, and we found out about a year later why that was such a good decision. Because my then-husband was deployed and sent to Iraq, and left me with the house, two kids, a dog, and a full-time job. So I was a little nervous, but I found out soon that I didn't have to be, because our community rallied around us and supported us through everything that we needed to do. And the best thing that they did for us is when we were coming home from the airport, when we were bringing him home, South Lion lined the streets in flags, and every business had to sign out for him. And when we pulled into our neighborhood, all of our neighbors were outside, ready to have a party with us. And I've always thought, how could I not want to give back to a community that would do that for my family and me? And so I've known I've always wanted to do this, but I wanted to make sure I had the time and I had the experience. And I think that's now. My kids are now off to college, so I have some time, and I have a great deal of experience to bring to the community. And part of that experience is I've worked with and advocated for just about every segment of the population that there is. I've worked with seniors. When I worked at the Better Business Bureau, I created a senior program to help seniors avoid scams and identify them. I've worked with youth all of my life. I used to work at a residential facility for at-risk kids, and I'm, right now, I'm a youth mentor at South Lion Youth Assistance. I've worked with military families in a family readiness program, and along with my kids and their father, we were the 2018 Michigan National Guard Volunteer Family of the Year. I've worked with special needs population, and I've worked with businesses. I've worked for the Better Business Bureau, where I developed a program for networking and helping businesses learn how to market. And I'm also on the Detroit Regional Chamber, where I help businesses with their marketing as well. I also bring other related experience. I've been in the corporate world for decades. I am no stranger to budgeting, although I know municipal budgeting is a little bit different. I'm a director at an infrastructure and environmental engineering firm, which I believe will help me when we have things to talk about with roads and sewers. And I created and implemented a citywide program at the city of Novi, so I've worked with government, and I've collaborated with just about every commission that there was. I'm also a volunteer, just a perpetual volunteer for anything that I can find. So I'd like to take all that experience, that everything I've learned, and use it for the benefit of South Lion. My goal in running is to ensure that the council's focus stays on the community, the residents, and our businesses. I have a fresh perspective, a positive attitude, experience with communities and businesses to help move the city forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Jim?
Thank you. I'd like to start by thanking the library and Donna Olson for hosting, as well as the League of Women Voters, for hosting this event. I know it's a lot of effort, and I'd like to thank our moderator, Phil Allman, as well as this audience for having come out. And I know, and a lot of people have busy schedules, and hopefully, we will not take you away from that. I'm a newcomer relatively to South Lion. We live, my wife and I and two kids live in the north end of town at Trotters Point. We've been here for a couple of years now. Prior to that, we lived in Oak Park for 23 years. We came here because we needed a bigger home, and we wanted our kids to have an environment that we knew we can depend on, where there's lots of family activities and wonderful people. And South Lion was where we searched, after we landed up, after we landed, after we searched all around metro Detroit. Previously, we came from Oak Park, so we wanted to stay here in the general area, in the metro area. I worked for a large company called BT. I am currently a network engineer, but I have been in the PC industry since its beginnings back in the early 80s. I saw the vision that the PC industry was going to take over and proliferate within all of society. And I've seen lots of wonderful innovations, and I've contributed to those innovations. Also, part of what I've done since the beginning is that I've had to understand, listen to other people, understand what they do, understand how to take what they do and what they need and turn it into something that's concrete and they can utilize day-to-day and make their lives better. I have experiences in doing things in all kinds of different environments. I've worked with seniors, where I wrote a software program to train them back in the mid-80s on utilizing ATMs. I've been past PTA president for my child's previous school. And I've got numerous other contributions to community activities over the years. I get involved with my place of worship, where I assist in every way I can, where one of the experiences was I took the actual tools in hand and rehabilitated the parking lot and the grounds, as well as contributed to numerous, my apologies, to numerous other local activities in my community where I lived at in Oak Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Dana?
Hi. Thank you for having me this evening. I have lived and worked in the city for over 40 years. I am a volunteer. I have worked in the volunteer aspect of our community. I've stood next to children and worked with them. I have brought in fire safety programs for our local community. I've also volunteered, not only with our children, but with our seniors. South Lion is a wonderful place to live. I grew up here. I graduated high school. My siblings, my children have graduated from school here. I'm a proud grandma. I also have a grandson who is starting this year. I work a lot with the VFW here in our community. I think being a part of this community is way more than just what I can bring to the table. I feel in my heart that I need to not only work for the community and for the city, but for the people. The people of South Lion need to have a voice. The people of South Lion need to say, you know what? It's time to stand up. That's why I'm running. That's why I'm here. I'm here because I want to represent the people of our city. For many years, I have been volunteering. And when I mean many, my children call it voluntold. And they love the city as much as I do. This city has brought tears to people's eyes, joy to people's hearts, in so many different directions. And I would be very remiss if I didn't stand up right now. It's a good time in my life. It's a good time to just to say, I'm going to stand up and be the best person I could be to represent the city of South Lion in many different aspects. I love to meet people. I love to talk to people. I love to have them be a part of my life. And I love the fact that the city of South Lion is going in brand-new ways, and it's an exciting time to be a part of the city. We have new businesses, new department heads. We've just, it's just been a wonderful time, and I'm hoping to be more of a part of it. And I'm hoping you'll want me to be more a part of it. I'm very approachable, and I love to talk, so please, if you see me, stop me and talk to me. This is a great time to be a part of the city of South Lion, and I'm hoping I can bring my experience and my love of the city to the city. And I'm really excited about my kids, and my kids are coming back to this community and raising my grandchildren here. And it's nice to see a legacy going on, and we have a great community here, and we need to start working with our neighbors next door, and I think that's going to be happening really soon. Thank you for your time, and I hope you really come visit me and stop and talk to me when you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Steve?
Good evening. I'm city council member Steve Kennedy. My wife and I have lived in South Lion for more than 47 years. We've raised our family and our children here. They've attended school at Sayer Centennial, South Lion High School, and that's where they met their future spouses. Career-wise, I've been a management consultant for more than 40 years, working with major corporations to help them improve their operations and performance. This includes companies like Johnson &amp; Johnson, Procter &amp; Gamble, Ford Motor, and General Electric. I've helped these companies improve their production and maintenance operations by reducing operating expenses, maximizing asset performance, and extending the useful life of their assets. In many cases, this involved establishing and managing capital improvement programs and implementing five-year asset replacement plans to better project and manage future needs. As I transitioned into retirement, I had the time to get more involved with our community, and I began attending the city council meetings. I did that for two to three years, sitting in the audience, watching the meetings to see what was going on in the city. Having attended the council meetings, I knew the council and the city could benefit from my background and experience, and I had the time to do it. So when a council member resigned, I applied for the opening and was selected to fill the vacancy. That was two years ago. Since being on the council, I've used my experience and interpersonal skills to contribute to the progress being made in the city. The residents are seeing the improvements being made in the downtown area, with new businesses coming to town, existing businesses expanding. What may be less noticeable is the attention that is now being focused on the city's infrastructure, specifically the water and wastewater systems. These systems had a number of maintenance issues that until recently did not receive the intention they deserved and needed to be addressed. I provided a list of 19 items that should have been addressed to the city manager. Thirteen of those were included in this year's budget. The issues being addressed will ensure that the residents have reliable drinking water and waste, and safe, reliable drinking water and wastewater services for the future. I've proven that I can effectively, cooperatively, and collaboratively work with other key members of the city and city council to move our city forward. However, the work is not finished, and I want to continue building on the progress that has been made. That's why I'm asking for your support on November 5th to continue moving South Lion forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Amber?
Thanks, Phil. Good evening, everybody. My name is Amber King. I've been a resident of South Lion for nearly 17 years. I live in Oak Creek Village with my husband and my two daughters, who attend Millennium Middle School and East High School. I have a bachelor's degree in mathematics and psychology from Bryn Mawr College, and I have a master's degree in applied statistics from the University of Michigan. I've been working in market research and data analysis for 20 years now, and I'm currently employed at Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan in Detroit. I became involved in our community many years ago when I began attending, as Steve did, city council meetings, because I also wanted to get a better idea of what was going on in the city. I sometimes had the opportunity to offer suggestions, ask questions, when it was appropriate, and they were sometimes taken into account, which was, which was nice. It made me want to become more involved in city council and do what I could to help the city move forward. Nearly six years ago, the council asked residents to step up and form a cable commission, and I took that opportunity to volunteer for the community, and I became one of the first members of the cable commission at that time. I've also been on the board for the Homeowners Association in Oak Creek Village, where we live, for over three years. And I've been a trustee on the Board of Directors for the Friends of the Salem-South Lion Library here for the past three years, and for the past two of those years, I have been the president of the Friends. I've also volunteered through our schools and at many local events, such as Pumpkin Fest, Fury for a Feast, the Blues Brews and Brats that is put on by the city, and other activities as well. Being involved in the community where I'm raising my family is very important to me, and I feel that being on city council is the logical next step and a great way to use the experience that I've gained. I feel that my analytical skills, my personal skills, my connections that I have in this community, and the desire to do what's best for our town would make me a great addition to city council. I would like to thank the library for hosting this event tonight, and for the, I would like to thank the residents as well for giving us the opportunity to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Margaret?
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for attending this evening. First, I would like to thank all the voters who voted for me in 2015. Almost 1,000 did. Thank you for your confidence in my leadership and my commitment to the city's progress. In 2015, when I first ran for council, the downtown was a dust bowl. In fact, I think the South Lion Herald actually stated that and quoted me in the paper. And look at where it is today. Now, I'm not going to take credit for the success, but things changed during the past four years. But what I will take credit for is that I came to those city council meetings, and I asked the tough questions as to why that downtown got in the condition it did. And I came to those city council meetings, and I still do, prepared, researched, and ready to find solutions. I'll take credit for arguing in 2016 that our city needed an economic development director, a full-time with credentials and experience. That was the key right there, experience and credentials. I'll take credit for voting for a city manager in 2018, who I believe historically will probably be the best city manager the city has ever seen. I'll take credit for following that city budget and being a budget hawk. I watched that budget at every single city council meeting. In fact, there's actually an agenda item on the, on the, on the agenda now for budget. But with all these successes, we're still not done. A lot of work still needs to be done. The management team is in place, I believe. I believe that the commitment from the investors is coming into the downtown area. But we still need to work on continued future planning, and we need to work on continued financial sustainability in the city. My credentials for running, and not for running, but running for reelection to city council, I'm a business attorney. I'm also a practicing economist. I also have a broker's license with respect to real estate. So I also believe that we can continue, and I believe that I can continue to deliver on my commitment to an economically viable downtown and a fiscally responsible budget. So once again, I am Margaret Kurzweil. I am a candidate for reelection to city council, and presently, I serve as the city's mayor pro temp. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret. Lori?
Good morning, or good evening, I'm sorry. A little nervous here. I'm a 40-year resident of the area. I've lived in the city for over 30 years. Graduate of South Lion High School. I've just retired from the city of South Lion after being the city's bookkeeper for over 25 years. In that position, I was responsible for all the accounting and functions, including budget prep, audit schedules, benefit levels for all employees. I administered all of those, implemented and, all benefit levels or changes in benefits. I apologize. I'm a little nervous here. Very familiar with the city's finances, including state shared revenues, Act 51, major and local street monies, all expenditures, and debt. In the past, I've volunteered for many city events, including sitting on the Pumpkin Fest Board, assisted with the Pumpkin Fest Parade. I helped orchestrate the citywide cleanup for six years. I assisted with the farmer's market and participated in the Cool Yule. As a member of the Parks and Rec Commission, I was instrumental in asking the city of South Lion's council to restrict $174,000 for park use. Once we did that, we joined up with the South Lion Junior Athletic League, built two new baseball fields using those funds, matching what the Junior Athletic League raised for those. In watching our downtown growth, it's been exciting. With the facade renovations, new investors coming into the city, our downtown is becoming a more desirable and attractive place to be. Now, the debt for the Wells Street parking lot has been paid for. I believe the DDA, Downtown Development Authority, will have more funds to be possibly programming future events for the downtown area, as well as looking into doing improvements to the roads, sidewalks, and whatnot. I've always been proud to say that I'm from South Lion. We've had our issues, good and bad, but regardless of the headlines, we've always been a close knit community. That's what makes South Lion great. With all my governmental accounting experience, a desire to be of service, and now some extra time, I feel I can help keep our city a welcoming community.
Thank you, Lori.
Okay. And as a reminder for the audience, if you have a cell phone, please make sure it's silenced or turned off. I forgot to mention that before. Thank you very much. Now, for the first of our three pre-event questions. Over the past few years, residents of South Lion have seen their community in the local, state, and national news for reasons that no community wants to be a part of. How can you change that? Jim, we'll start with you.
Thank you. The truth is, a lot of what's been in the news is based upon individuals' behavior. You can't control what individuals do. However, being in the public limelight, you are responsible for your actions, and you need to take due diligence in ensuring that you are not in the, in the media, or at least not in the negative way. Additionally, all council members should be required, like at the corporate, large corporate organizations, to take ethics and sensitive, sensitivity training that should be renewed on a regular basis. In the corporate world, we do it annually. Such training could be at very low cost and can be performed online as we do it in the corporate world. The, the city is nothing more than just another business. It has a charter, and it has a ruling body, and it has administration and executives to manage it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Dana?
It's been unfortunate that we've had that negative press. I think we, what we need to do is form a unity with our chamber and with our local government, that if we have problems and we have negativity toward each other, do that in closed room. Take that away from when you're in the public. When we sit at the table for our monthly meetings, we should look as, look as, look out as a unity force. It doesn't make a community feel safe if everybody is nitpicking with each other. It doesn't make any sense. If we can just move past, work together as a team, work together for the betterment of our community without bringing in personalities, it's really hard to do. When I used to run festivals, one of the main things I used to do is nobody was allowed to yell. Nobody. We talked it out, and when we couldn't talk it out, there you go.
Thank you, Dana. Steve?
I believe the pathway to changing the media's image of the city is to continuing, continue operating, as I always have since being on the council, in a logical, rational, and professional manner, ensuring that my actions reflect positively on our city, its residents, and our community. It means continuing to work with other key city and council members to move the city forward and ensure its successes and the results are the focus for the media, not the distraction of the drama.
Thank you, Steve. Amber?
Having attended council meetings for years has given me insight into the dynamics of how council works and how council members interact, which will be helpful if I'm elected to city council. I have to say Harvey Waddell was an inspiration to me as a council member with his calm demeanor and his focus on the issues at hand. Additionally, I'm fortunate to already have worked with and have a good relationship with many members of city council and employees of city hall. I worked with Mayor Pellchat and Mr. Richards for three years on the cable commission before they were elected to city council. I have a friendly relationship with all the other current members of council, and recently had the opportunity to work with Bob Donahue and the city manager, developing a survey for the businesses in our community. I am not a confrontational person by nature, and I feel that I could help maintain civility and establish teamwork as a member of council.
Thank you. Margaret?
Thank you very much. I look at things a little bit differently. I look at things that happen maybe in a negative sense, and you grow from it, and you, and you take from that event, and you build character, and if you need to adjust your moral compass, that's what you do. Leadership is not about the negative events that happen in life. They're going to happen regardless. You're not going to change anything negative that's going to come down the pike two, three years from now. The issue is not the negative event. The issue is how do you react and how do you respond? That's leadership. That is leadership. Use it to learn, build character, adjust that moral compass, and move on. That is the key to anything that happens is to move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Lori?
I can't control how the people behave. I can't control how they conduct themselves. What I can do is control my, how I conduct myself and how do I react to these situations. I think we all... I think we all have to take a moment and think, you know, we're representing our city, so our actions and deeds speak loud and clear. I will not be taking part of anything in, becoming to the city of South Lion. My intention is to treat others like I would like to be treated and promote positive attitudes.
Thank you, Lori. And Lisa?
Obviously, these things have happened, and they're disappointing, a little embarrassing. The thing that worries me is that I think that we've lost some of the trust with our residents. I've talked to a lot of residents, and a lot of them are kind of fed up with that, and I think that we need to change. I've worked in high-stress professions for decades. I know how to conduct business, and I know how to disagree with people in a professional manner. If you look, ever looked at my LinkedIn profile, you can see a lot of things that people have said about me. And one of my favorite is a client who said, "Lisa's professionalism and good humor has won her fans among coworkers and the larger community. She's generous with her time, quick to spot a good idea, business-minded, and focused on making everyone around her successful in their goals." That's what you'll get if you elect me. If I'm elected, I'm going to work hard to get along with people, but I'm not going to be anybody's rubber stamp either. The thing I can promise you is I won't embarrass the city. I won't use my position to promote my own agenda, and I won't air our dirty laundry in public. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. All right, for our second pre-event question. What do you feel are the top three expenditures the city should be most careful about and why? Dana, we'll start with you.
The top three, one of them, of course, is our roads and our infrastructure. Our water system is in a lot of parts of our city, because our city is old, needs to be updated. Everybody is always saying, "We have to fix our roads, we have to fix our roads." But until we get the underground pipes, the water, the sewer, even some of the electrical that is under our, our streets, until we get that fixed, don't put a new road on it. Because in 20 years or five years, we're going to have to take it and dig it back up. That's one of the things we need to look at, and maybe looking for grants. Going out, maybe working with our, our partners and our community, other communities around us, saying, you know, 10 Mile goes here, and then it goes right to Lion Township. Maybe we can work with them and maybe get a little bit of money from the, from the government to maybe help support that. There's lots and many ways that we can go at it. You just got to give us a chance to do it and to make a plan.
Thank you, Dana. Steve?
I believe the top three expenditure focus areas are major roads and their associated infrastructure, local roads and their infrastructure, and ensuring the reliability of the water and wastewater systems. To effectively and responsibly manage those expenditures, we need to implement and adhere to a capital improvement plan that will objectively evaluate the needs under each of those categories, determine the most appropriate approach for financing those initiatives, and develop a realistic schedule for accomplishing those objectives. Regarding the question why, it's because there is only so much money available and only so much of a burden that the taxpayers can shoulder to accomplish this. We need to be creative and fiscally responsible in addressing those challenges.
Thank you, Steve. Amber?
I agree with what Dana and Steve have said. The city's infrastructure, including the water, the sewer, and some of the city buildings, they need attention. And so maintaining the capital improvement plan funding to support the needs of the city is very important. Also, supporting the Downtown Development Authority is another vital responsibility for city council, and that means making sure that the DDA has the funds they need to promote the city to residents and businesses alike. It also means making sure that the funds that they have are being used as efficiently as possible. Another more general expenditure the city should pay attention to is keeping an eye on the day-to-day costs of running the city and ensuring that they're being used efficiently. We need to continue to look for alternatives to remain fiscally responsible by searching out grants, for example, and looking for economic ways to do business when possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Margaret?
Thank you. When I was first elected four years ago, the city did not have a capital improvement plan and still does not have a capital improvement plan in place. That's a disappointment, and that's something that we need to change. I've been about change on city council and moving it forward into the future. Into the future also means that we have to deal with some of our contingent liabilities. For four years now, I've been talking about our unfunded pension liability. We still do not have a plan in place for how we are going to deal with our unfunded pension liability. We are also going to have problems with our healthcare responsibilities with respect to retirees. So my focus with respect to expenditures is moving the city forward, looking at our future, and not so much with day-to-day. It's the future we need to think about. We can't kick that can down the road anymore. We have to have it, we have to deal with it, and that's about leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Lori?
I agree with Maggie. The unfunded pension liability should be a main concern for all council members. We've already taken steps to close four out of the five employee divisions. And what that did was set us up to have one monthly payment at a straight-dollar amount every month for one year. It goes up every year. But that makes it much easier for budgeting. And it closes off the divisions to new employees, so we're not furthering our liability, and it will be paid off. I believe it's around a 20- to 22-year payoff mark. Things we can do to hurry that along, we can close the other employee division to new hires, get that flat rate amount for the month, so we can do our budgeting correctly. And then, I know if we explore other options to merge or other things we can do, setting up another division, just putting money into it until it grows, and then putting it in to pay down other liabilities within the divisions. Another expenditure we're going to have is on our roads and infrastructure.
Thank you very much. Lisa?
Top three, same that you've been hearing. I'd say infrastructure, infrastructure, and infrastructure. Water, water supply, wastewater systems, and roads. They're not only the expenditures that may have the biggest price tags, but they're the ones that have the biggest impact on our daily lives. I work for an infrastructure engineering firm, and I've seen firsthand how devastating and costly an infrastructure disaster can be. So when I spoke to the city manager, I was pleased to hear about the capital improvement plan that he's talking about, and I was a little shocked to hear that we did not have one. It's important to take a holistic approach, to look at all the city's infrastructure, inspect everything before making repairs and spending money. If it's not done properly with the right planning, we could end up with costly emergency repairs that take time and resources away from other important needs.
Thank you, Lisa. And Jim?
Thank you. One of the biggest items in the city's agenda that we need to focus on and focus on very quickly is the roads and infrastructure for the city. Before we can put together a capital improvement plan, we actually have to come together and set a priority of what are the various capital improvements that we need to focus on first, and what are short-term, midterm, and long-term goals in that capital improvement plan. Another issue we have to deal with and be very careful about is the unfunded pension plan. This could cause catastrophic issues for the city if there is another economic downturn in the near future. The city's primary funding source is from taxes, residential taxes, and that's not going to change. We have to ensure property values remain high, and we have, and that will come through focusing on bringing additional activities as well as having a viable downtown that's long stand, long-term.
Thank you, Jim. Now for our third pre-event question. How would you describe the role of the city council in advancing the needs of the community compared to the role of the city manager and his responsibilities? Steve, we'll start with you.
Thank you. As representatives of the residents, the city council sets policy and direction for the city. It defines the overall strategy for future development and establishes the goals and objectives. It provides the big-picture vision for the city. The city manager is responsible for establishing the methods, activities, and means required to carry that, that action out and achieve that strategy. He is responsible for ensuring alignment between the focus that's been set by the council and the activities conducted by the city's departments that report to him. Bottom line, the city council takes the voice of the community to set the vision and the strategy, and the city manager helps execute it.
Thank you, Steve. Amber?
What Steve said. That was very good. While the city manager is in charge of the day-to-day administrative tasks of running the city, the city council has the role of setting policy and approving budgets based on community feedback, thoughtful discussion, and keeping a long-term view of what's best for South Lion. The reasoning behind decisions made by city council aren't always apparent to the public, and there needs to be an improvement in the communication between the city and its residents. The city website will soon be refreshed, which should help with that. And we need to encourage our residents to be involved as they can be in what happens here in South Lion by volunteering, attending council meetings, making suggestions, and asking questions when things aren't clear. This communication with the city and with the city council will help both groups do their job more efficiently. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Margaret?
Thank you. The role of city council basically is that of vision. It's, it's the ability of council to look forward into the future and say, "This is where our city is going," provide the amenities that the residents are looking for, whether it's police and fire, whether it's recreational activities. Your city manager by charter, by the charter, is vested with the responsibility of the day-to-day management. The problem that city councils have sometimes with managers is that, is, is finding that city manager that is connecting with the vision of city council. And I think we have that right now. That, that is the key, though, is the city manager connecting with the vision of the city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maggie. Lori?
Well, to me, council's job is to maintain city policies, ascertain the needs of the citizens, create plans to meet those needs, and communicate that to the city manager. The city manager is responsible for implementing short- and long-term plans, policies, and oversee day-to-day operations of all the departments through your appropriate department heads.
Thank you, Lori. Lisa?
So we've heard already what the roles really are. But what I kind of want to focus on is what I think council also could be and should be, in my opinion. I think that the, the council needs to be an advocate for businesses and residents. They need to bring, they need to reach out and bring back concerns and problems to the attention of the city manager and people who can do something about it. Also need to be a champion for the city. Council members need to be a walking, talking billboard for the city. They need to have an elevator pitch and tell it to anybody that will listen to them. People want inspiration, they want positive leadership, and they want to know what's going on. And I think council also needs to be see, to see and be seen at events and be examples of, of community stewardship. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Jim?
The city council's role is spelled out clearly in the charter. It is the legislative organization of the city. However, there is the practical perspective of what is the city council. As all the other members have mentioned here, the city council does represent and ascertain the needs of the residents and the community, as well as the businesses. The city council brings, sets policy and sets the vision for the community based upon the needs of the community as best as they can see it. The city council works with the city manager who, who implements that vision on a day-to-day basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And Dana?
Thank you. Working as a volunteer in the city for over 40 years, I've had the great opportunity of knowing a lot of city managers. I've seen good city managers, and I've seen some not pleasant city managers. Our city manager that we have now, he is bright, he is a spark. He has hired new department heads. We have a new police chief, a new fire chief, a new head of our water department. City council needs to back him up, and that's what city council's for. He is helping city council realize the goals of the city. He's going to help the city council realize what we can do for our people of our community. We are the people's voice to the city council, and that's what city council needs to be known for, not the thorn in his side. We need to stand by our city manager, and we need to stand up for our citizens and make sure our citizens' voice are heard, not at the, not just at the city council level, but also at the city managers. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. And that wraps up our pre-event questions. We're going to take a one-minute break for the cable TV to get something set, and then we will start with the audience questions. Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. At this point, we will start with our audience questions. This first question, we will start with, with Amber, and then we will work our way through. So the first question, some of them are lighter, some of them are a little more specific. First, we'll start off with, "Why do you like living in South Lion?"
That's a good question. There are a lot of reasons. We are fortunate to live in a small-town feeling. The people of this town and the small-town feeling to it are very welcoming, and it's, it's really nice to feel a part of something, that type of community. We have a lot of great... Sorry, I'm blanking. We have a lot of great things that we can do. We've got parks, we've got great businesses downtown. We have all sorts of things, and we're, and we're moving forward with that in the future. So I think that not only is it a great place to live now, but it will continue to improve as we move forward.
Thank you, Amber. Margaret?
Thank you. I think my criteria is no different than anybody else's criteria. The number one is I want to move into a safe community. And, and we are so fortunate to have the South Lion Police Department, which has just been absolutely phenomenal and instrumental in, in promoting safety in our community. And that was the number-one criteria for me. Additionally, I'm an outdoor enthusiast, so I enjoyed being near Kensington Lake. I used to sail competitively, so I got near the water when I was over at Kensington, and I enjoyed it. And now I've transitioned from sailing to gardening. And the South Lion area is just a great area for me to garden in, and I've got great friends here. The small-town atmosphere is clearly another opportunity that I wanted with respect to living. I enjoy small towns, I grew up in a small town, and frankly, I feel like I'm back home many, many, many years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Lori?
Well, what's not to like about living in South Lion, really? Got a great, great park system. Our downtown's growing by leaps and bounds. You can see it already, the changes that have been made. You get a lot of bang for your buck with your tax dollars. We have our own police department. We don't farm it out. We have our own fire department. We have our own water and sewer department. We're not dependent on Detroit Water System or for any of that. It's a welcoming community, great school system, a great place to raise a family.
Thank you, Lori. Lisa?
I really appreciate the way the community, our community rallies for each other. Sometimes there's some fighting, you know, old versus new. There's Democrats versus Republicans, but it doesn't seem to matter when there's a really big issue. The one I explained for myself was big, but also there's outpouring for the football coach whose house burned down. The whole South Lion Murphy, find, you know, catching the dog and rescuing him. Tree down in 10 Mile. Plenty of fundraisers that, that happen. Our community rallies for each other, and I love that. My done, I'm sorry. And the, the other thing that I really like beyond that is I think that our youth are amazing. I think that they, they don't get enough credit, and they do so many things for our community that I think, I really would like to showcase that a little bit more. And the final thing is, I, I, we are so lucky to have the parks and the trails that we have here. It's just a wonderful community, and, and it's unbelievable, sometimes, I think, that you get to live in such a safe, fun community.
Thank you, Lisa. Jim?
First and foremost, when we are looking to a community to move our family into, in all of Metro Detroit, safety was number one. And we found that in South Lion. And we found that in South Lyon. We also wanted to find a community that had the classic Americana image still, that had not lost it, like many other communities, yet at the same time, benefit from being in a modern metropolitan area. Also, one of the things that we were attracted to is the local activities that are constantly going on, that are family-oriented, that we can be engaged in, that we can either volunteer for, or we can attend or do both. And also, the surrounding area is of the metro and state parks, where we can go, just hop and skip away and enjoy ourselves for just a few hours without having to drive for hours to get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Dana?
Growing up in the city of South Lyon and the surrounding areas has been a great adventure. I remember when the city only had one flashy light, and it has grown to this beautiful community that is welcoming to everybody. We are in one of the safest communities. Our police, our fire, our EMS, all work really well together, and we also work with our sister cities around us, or I mean, our communities. South Lyon is a great place to raise your children, to walk your dog, to become a part of the community. I welcome new people to come to our community. I welcome them with open arms to become a volunteer, join the festival committee, join other community groups that are in our city here now. There are so many opportunities that children can do, so many opportunities that yourself can do. We have biking trails, we have our sledding hill that goes down into the back, almost my backyard, because I live right behind McCatty Park. So, we get to enjoy that all the time.
Thank you, Dana. Steve?
The city has everything: great schools, safety, the park system, the rails to trails, and first and foremost, its residents. I mean, the sense of community, you know, from the people that are here. When we first moved out here, there were probably less than 2,000 people. We're coming close to, we'll probably trip over 12,000 in the next census. And yet, the camaraderie is there, people work with one another, people in the city have absolutely minimal ideas to where the boundaries of the city end and where the boundaries for the township of Lyon Township begin. It's one big community, and nobody differentiates between one or the other. Everybody pulls together, whether it's for the football games, the passing of a local politician, whatever it is. The city is always there, and its residents are always there for everyone.
Thank you, Steve. All right. For our next audience question, with the population growth in the area, would you support annexing land from Lyon Township to grow the city tax base?
Start with you, Margaret. Thank you. I think annexation is an explosive issue, and I don't think any community wants any of its property annexed for the benefit of another community. I frankly enjoy the relationships that I have with the surrounding communities, Lyon Township, Green Oak, and I would not want to be on the track that was leading an annexation to take some of their land from their community. I understand the tax base issue very, very well, but I don't believe that annexation is the way to do it. I think it creates enemies, I think it creates bad feelings, and I'm more about leadership and creating a regional cooperation than I am about dividing our area with respect to an annexation-type of program to raise taxes.
Thank you, Maggie. Lisa?
Or Lori, I'm sorry. Lori?
I would not promote annexation either. When I first started working for the city, that's how we got as big as we did. We started annexing people or properties in because developers wanted the city services. It did cause some bad blood between us and some of the townships. As far as increasing our tax base, we have to find a way to entice more industry. We have an industrial area, put in those types of businesses, and I think that would be the way to raise our tax base a little bit higher, and attracting more businesses into our downtown would be the way I would like to see it happen.
Thank you, Lori. Now, Lisa?
Thank you. I would agree. I would not be in support of that. I think that we have enough animosity sometimes that comes up between us and our neighbors, even though I know we all want to work together. I don't think that that's the best way to do it. Getting more taxes with the, increasing the industry, increasing our businesses downtown and all around South Lyon, I think is a better way to do that.
Thank you, Lisa. Jim?
I agree with what Laura Raven said. Annexation is not the way to go. As a matter of fact, that's one of the reasons why Lyon Township became a charter township, which essentially prohibits annexation as it was done in the past. The best way to go is to cooperate with the other communities that surround South Lyon so that this way, we can focus our tax dollars where they're needed most within the city that benefit not just us, but the other communities, and at the same time, growing our industrial area and the downtown area, as well as increasing value in the properties here within South Lyon to increase our tax base. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Dana?
I do not agree with annexation either. I think working with our communities around us. There are a couple areas in our city where the Lyon Township water and city water almost cross a little places. I think if we could sit down with our neighbors and say, can we work together? There are a lot of different ways we can do it. I also agree, we need to build our tax base with getting some more industrial. There are some areas that we really could improve on that. I don't think our taxpayers need to be taxed anymore, so by bringing in new business, new commerce, and just work with our surrounding communities. Maybe if there's a piece of equipment or something that needs to be purchased, maybe our surrounding communities might need it also. Maybe we could go like Habsies, like, sort of like what we do with our fire departments, like a mutual aid type pack. There's so many different things that we can do, and we have to think out of the box. It's time to start thinking out of the box. We're running out of space in our city?
Thank you, Dana. Steve?
I don't believe annexation is the answer. I believe it's cooperation with the surrounding communities. We, as everybody has already mentioned, we have some commercial and light industrial property that is still available. We need to make a full-court press to populate that area, just like we've done with the downtown area. We also need to look at the, have some discussions with our neighbors about the opportunity and possibility for shared facilities, whatever it happens to be, whether it's a community center or whatever it might take. These are opportunities for us to benefit from those services to the community without necessarily having to raise taxes and having to make those types of full expenditures.
Thank you, Steve. Amber?
Thank you. I can understand the argument for annexation. If you look at a map of the city, it's very piecemeal, and I think some people don't realize how cut-out parts of our city are. There are places where sidewalks are missing and where the hands of the city are tied when it comes to making changes or improvements to areas that seem to be in our city, and they're actually not. So, would it be nice to have a nice, clean, we understand where our boundaries are, and we know what we can affect change and where we can't? It would be nice. It really would. But it's not very practical, and I think that I have to agree with everyone else up here that we need to improve our communication and our partnership with Lyon Township to make those changes and to make the improvements we would like to see that affect our residents.
Thank you, Amber. All right. Now, for our next audience question, what specific event or instance caused you to make the decision to run for city council?
Lori, let's start with you. I retired. No, really, after working with the city for 25 years, I'm so used to being involved in a lot of things. I volunteered for a lot of things, you know, different events and whatnot, and I know what it's like on that side of the fence. I want to see what it's like on the other side. Is the grass really greener? Not sure, but we're going to find out. I have the time now. I didn't have the time to put into it before.
Thank you, Lori. Lisa?
Thank you. I don't know if there was a specific event, really. I think it was just a continuation of an interest that I had ever since the first story that I told about wanting to give back to the community. I think I've always been interested in it, and I've just been paying attention to the city council. I feel like I am ready, and I have the time, and I have the experience, and it came up as an issue right now, and I know that there's been some problems with residents being frustrated with the way city council ran, and I thought I could bring some of the experience and positivity that I have to the city council. So, it was more of a gradual thing than a specific event.
Thank you, Lisa. Jim?
Thank you. There was no specific thing that caused me to run for city council at this time. I've always been interested and involved in what the government does. When I was in college, I ran for and was elected to the student senate, as well as to the dormitories house council. I've always wanted to give to the community and help other people. I've always tried to develop and expand my skills so that I can best utilize them to help other people. Here in South Lyon, I saw that there is some need for continued improvement and innovation, things like the downtown area needs to become a destination area, not just someplace that people come to for a few minutes, as well as bring some professional perspective and fresh perspective to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Dana?
I have been volunteering, working in this city my entire life, and I think it's time for me to step out of the volunteer position and into the position of working with city council. I can bring a lot of knowledge to the city. I know a lot of history of the city. I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of different people over the years, and I think it's time for me to stop just volunteering and, like my gram used to say, put up or shut up. And I'm ready to put up, and I'm ready to stand up for the city of South Lyon, stand up for the people of this community, and not back down. I will guarantee you that I will be one of the hardest-working people you've ever met because I don't give up, and I stand for the city. I love the city. I cannot think of anything else I can say, but thank you.
Thank you, Dana. All right. Steve?
As I mentioned, I sat and attended those council meetings for two to three years, and one of the things that just used to irk me was watching the council members pander to the camera filming the proceedings. They'd sit there and talk about how they're saving the taxpayers' money by voting against repairs that need to be performed in this city, losing matching funds that we had available from county and state, just under the pretense of saving them money. And, you know, maintenance issues didn't get addressed that should have been addressed. Having worked in this industry for over 40 years, there isn't one maintenance issue that gets better, cheaper, or less complicated the longer you wait to address it. So, somebody was kidding somebody, and when the opening and the opportunity came to get on the council and do something to address those issues that had been brought forward, I jumped at the chance, and I've enjoyed it ever since.
Thank you, Steve. Amber?
I agree, there wasn't one specific moment when I decided that I wanted to run for city council. As other folks up here have said, it was a little more gradual. There were, having the opportunity to see the city council meetings and become more familiar with how that worked, and through the other volunteer activities that I've done, it seemed natural that the next step would be city council. As someone who's involved in a lot of areas, and I just think that I could bring some experience to it, and, so, yeah, there wasn't one moment, but I've definitely, I'm definitely glad that I did.
Thank you, Amber. And Margaret?
Thank you. When I was first, when I first ran for city council in 2015, the issue at that time was developing the downtown. Today, as I run for reelection, that same issue is still on my platform. You can't have a small town without a small town. That downtown means a lot to the people that live in Salem, to the people that live in Green Oak, to the people that live in Lyon Township. This is everybody's downtown. So, keeping the viability and the economic feasibility of that downtown is an absolute priority for me. That is my platform, that is what I was back in 2015, and that's what it is tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. All right. For our next question, to do the job properly requires time, being prepared for the meetings, and doing your homework. How will you be able to address those requirements with your full-time job or other obligations? Lisa, we'll start with you.
Thank you. I have a full-time job. It is a flexible full-time job, but I still have, I do have one. One of the best things that I can bring is organization and being able to compartmentalize what I do. I can walk away from work and walk right into planning, reading council packets, and doing what I need to do to be prepared for the city. I'll also, and I just lost my train of thought, but it's something that I can do. I've been involved in a lot of other organizations. I used to have kids that I ran all over the place, and now, I don't have any of that to do anymore. I have plenty of time to dedicate to this, and I'm confident that I'll be able to do it.
Thank you, Lisa. Jim?
I also work full-time. As a matter of fact, I put in quite a few hours, more than full-time, for my job. I do what I need to do to get the job accomplished. If I need to work till 3:00 a.m. in the morning, I do it. Even in my own personal life, I do what's required to do the best job that's possible. Fortunately, I work from home, I have flexibility, I do travel, but I do have the ability to go back and do whatever is needed at the right time. If I'm elected, I will give the same dedication and commitment to the city of South Lyon and the people of South Lyon as I have in every other aspect of my life, and I will ensure success in everything that I do on behalf of the city of South Lyon. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Dana?
I think not just giving your time for the city, you have to be able to live in the city and be a part of everybody's life. I work three days a week. The rest of my time is being used to volunteer, back up people who need help, stand by people who need to be stood by, and I also have my own business that I have flexible hours that I can move things around to make sure that I am at all the council meetings and that I am reading the packets and that I am being informed on everything that needs to be done. And if I don't know a question, or if I don't know what it is, I know I can go to a department head to say, and say, I need help, and they will be more than willing to help me. I think working hard is not a crime, and I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and work really hard for the city, and I'm hoping you'll give me a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Steve?
I've been on the city council for two years. If you've watched the tapes, if you've attended the meetings, you know that I come to the sessions well-prepared. I've done the research, I've done the homework, and I'm ready to address the issues that are being brought before it. Being retired, I've also been the city's SEMCOG representative, so I've spent more than just the time needed to service the city on the council. I spend the time attending the general assembly meetings for SEMCOG, Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, their executive committee meetings, as well as a number of seminars and sessions provided by Oakland County and SEMCOG that bring up means by which we can address some of the challenges we face here in the city. So, the council is just one part of the picture in the amount of time that I've spent in my current position, and I enjoy doing it.
Thank you, Steve. Amber?
I, too, work full-time, and I also work from home, which gives me flexibility to arrange other things in my life around my work schedule. So, that's one benefit that I have when it comes to finding the time to address things that have to do with city council. Reading and researching are two of my favorite activities, and that was something that really interested me in this position because you need to be able to read thoroughly the packets every meeting and come to the table, understanding what you've read, doing extra research, which Maggie certainly does, and being prepared to discuss them and come to logical conclusions. So, it's something that I'm, I think I'd be very good at. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Margaret?
Thank you. Preparation is definitely something that you need to bring to the table when you sit on city council. I agree with Steve. Watch the city council tapes, and you will see how prepared I am when I come to those city council meetings. I bring a stack of paperwork with me, I bring my research with me. I ask a lot of questions, and that may bother people, but you know what? I'm responsible to the residents in the city, and I'm asking the questions that they want asked. So, you need to come to that council prepared. You can't just come and walk in and walk out. Additionally, I've spent a phenomenal amount of time with respect to the city budget and working with Plant Moran. Once again, this is more than a full-time job. It is a commitment. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. And Lori?
Well, I seem to have time now, since I'm not working full-time for the city, but even if I were, I have rather erratic sleep habits, so I'm up early. I can get a lot of work done in a couple hours. I'd go into work early because I could get more done when nobody was there. I also know that once you go through the packets for the council meetings, the city manager is always available if you have questions. You can always call him, drop him an email, shoot him a text. I don't think I'll have any problem with time issues preparing for these meetings.
Thank you, Lori. For our next question, what is the most important quality of a council member? Jim, we'll start with you.
Thank you. One of the most important qualities is to listen. Listen to... Listen to the community, listen to people, and listen to other council members and the city administration. Keep your ear to everything that's going on, whether it be the activities such as Pumpkin Fest, the Memorial Day Parade, or even the cool year that's coming up. You need to pay attention and just listen to what's going on. Take that back and use innovation, think out of the box, and use insight of experience to make it happen.
Thank you, Jim.
Truthfulness is one of the big things, is to be true. Be true to the citizens of South Lyon, be true to yourself is one thing. I also agree with Jim. Listening, talking to the people, having them tell you their problems, and being ready and prepared to act on those problems. If I can't find a solution, I'm going to find somebody who will. I think working with the city of South Lyon, department heads, having their ears, if I have a question, if I have a concern, being able to go to them and say something on behalf of a citizen of South Lyon, on behalf of even a child. I had a child ask me the other day, "Why isn't there any more bigger swings there?" I said, "Well, they're coming." Just being a huge part of the city and being everywhere, going to all the events, doing, as he said, the Memorial Day Parade, which I've been doing for the last forty years. So it's there.
Thank you, Dana. Steve.
I think a council member needs to be a very effective listener. They need to be able to react to what they're hearing, and they need to be honest. If they don't know the answer, they need to be able to get the answer and get the information back to the person that asked that question. They need to be able to work collaboratively with other individuals on that council. There isn't one person that makes things happen on the council. It's a body of seven, and they need to be able to work cooperatively with one another. They need to be able to reach consensus and address the issues that are coming before them, and come to some sort of conclusion, and be able to bring about a result that's in the best interest of the city and its residents.
Thank you, Steve. Amber.
Similar to what Steve just said, I believe that teamwork is the most important aspect that you need to have as a council member. You are one of seven, and you need to work together to make decisions that are the best possible for the city and its residents. And I agree also that communication is huge, not only being able to communicate to the residents with each other, with the city manager and other members of the city, but also listening and hearing what the residents have to say and what they need and what their recommendations are for making the city move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Margaret.
Thank you. I'd like to add to some of those credentials, is that I think to sit on city council, you have to have integrity. That, to me, is probably one of the most important characteristics you have to have, public trust. You have to be able to go out into that public and look that voter in the eye and explain to them why you voted a certain way you did. And they have to trust that you're going to move forward with a particular vision that's going to be good for them. Additionally, voters have to be able to depend on you. I can't tell you the amount of people that come to me with issues, and they say, "Maggie, the reason I'm coming to you is because I know you'll get the job done." So those are some of the additional qualities that have already been discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori.
Well, I don't think there's any one best quality to have, but one of the better ones is to have an open mind to new ideas. Just because I might not like a new idea doesn't mean it's a bad fit for the rest of the city, for the rest of the council. We need to be listening to our residents and citizens in the area, find out what they want for their city, because they're the ones we represent.
Thank you, Lori. Lisa.
I would agree with most of what everyone else said. I would also say that availability is a big issue for me. I want, if I'm on city council, I want people to know who I am and know that they can come to me and that I'm available to talk with them, either on email, the phone, or even stopping at my house. I don't think people know enough who their representatives are, and I think that we need to do a better job making ourselves available. And I think overall that leads itself to having more two-way conversations. We need to have more opportunity for two-way conversations. Right now, I think there's opportunity to speak up at a city council meeting, but there's not a lot of back and forth. And I think that we need to do that and be a lot more available and present for our residents. I also think that temperament is a big thing that you should have. Being able to communicate and collaborate with the other council members is extremely important as well.
Thank you, Lisa. For our next question. What will you do to support public transportation, both in South Lyon and regionally? And Dana, we'll start with you.
Public transportation is very crucial. There's a couple people in our community now who probably could really use it. Supporting it would be, let's look at our governments around us, let's try to get some grants, get some grants to get some more buses. We have the People's Express here in the city, and I see a lot of senior centers and a lot of, going back and forth from the senior center into a lot of seniors' homes. We could use that. We could build on that. I even thought about, even once drivers ed kids needed some extra time, maybe they should start a little community Uber, drive some of the seniors around. I mean, start thinking out of the box, not staying well within. I know driver zeds are a little crazy, but you know what? I'm thinking out of the box, and that's what we really need right now. We can't just stay within our little structure. We've got to start looking for new ideas. Maybe start a program where maybe somebody could come up with a great idea.
Thank you, Dana. Steve.
As has been mentioned, the city currently subsidizes the People's Express. We provide transportation services to the residents of the city for a minimal fee to travel locally. As far as going, you know, I mean, that service will provide transportation over to Providence Hospital in Novi, out to Walmart, down to Kroger to go shopping and so forth. I don't know that all the residents know that that actually is available, and it could probably be publicized a little bit better than it is to make use of the money that the city invests in that particular service for its residents.
Thank you, Steve.
I agree with what Steve just said. I think that publicizing the People's Express is a good idea, get the word out so that more people are aware of it. But also, it may need to be looked at a little closer, and how is it being used? When is it being used? Do some analysis of how it's being used currently and ways that it could be used more efficiently, perhaps, and use it to the best of its advantage so that as many people can benefit from it as possible, I think would be a good start.
Thank you, Amber. Margaret.
Thank you. I think public transportation is one of those issues that we could actually work on regionally. And I think this is a prime opportunity for South Lyon to reach out to our neighbors and say, "How can we solve this public transportation issue for all of our community, not just the city of South Lyon?" Additionally, I think we have to be very sensitive to the large senior population that we have because they present particular issues with respect to maybe non-emergency medical transportation. And I don't know if we have completely satisfied that particular aspect of our public transportation, but I think this presents us with opportunities to look for solutions, both locally and regionally.
Thank you, Maggie. Lori.
At one time, the city had its own transportation department. We had one bus, several part-time drivers. I'm not sure why we quit doing it. We dropped that and went with Northfield Human Services, which is People's Express, which anymore, it's getting quite expensive, and it might almost be better to look at doing it ourselves again. Another place to look is see if we can get smart to come out this way. I know they don't come all the way out here, but if we could get Steve to put some pressure on them down there at SEMCOG, you know, maybe we get some smart buses out here, and that would be a start. And honestly, what Maggie suggested, a regional would not be out of the realm either with the surrounding communities.
Thank you, Lori. Lisa.
Thank you. I think that regionally, we could look at this as well, but we should also be looking at some public-private sponsorships and see if there's some ways that we could work with corporations or companies to try to solve some of these transportation issues. I know there's a lot of communities that do that and have businesses that sponsor vans and sponsor transportation for seniors and for other people. Also, I think that we need to make our city a little more bikeable and walkable. And I know that that's not, you know, mass transportation, but I think that that's a way that we can solve some of these things, to make the sidewalks better, and maybe even look into things like bike-sharing programs, bird scooters. I'm not saying we're going to do that, but we should be looking at those options and seeing if there's other ways to get people around the city instead of just in cars and buses.
Thank you, Lisa. Jim.
First of all, it does require a collaboration between South Lyon and surrounding communities. One of the things that happens, though, when you go buy into a regional system is how much the services are going to be dedicated to your area, to your residents. So we would risk losing that focus on our residents. What I think would be most beneficial is the immediate surrounding communities where we all go shop and work, as well as seeking funds at both the state and federal level, and maybe establishing a private-public partnership with the businesses here in downtown and within South Lyon and surrounding businesses in the surrounding communities, similar to what the hotels do at the airports and other downtowns in major metropolitan areas.
Thank you, Jim. For our next question. How do you feel 100% honesty with the public and with the council must be maintained? I'll read that again. How do you feel complete honesty, or I guess, in other words, how can the city ensure that the council members are 100% honest with each other on the council as well as with the public? We'll start with Steve.
We conduct the city's business in an open forum in the council chambers. There's nothing hidden. It's all out there. You can see exactly what's being discussed, how the decisions are being derived, how the alternatives are being developed and identified. It's all there, and there's a tape of those proceedings as well. The transparency is always available. So I think that's probably the best place to start, is watch what goes on in the council meetings. And then if you have questions, every one of the council, most of the council members have email addresses and respond to those emails. If you have additional information you want, feel free to contact them, and they'll be more than happy to provide information as to why they did what they did on the council.
Thank you, Steve.
With regards to guarantee 100% honesty, I don't think that can be done. There's no way to know for sure. Obviously, the first step is to elect people to the council that you believe are honest and have the city's best interests at heart. And certainly, having the open meetings that are available for anyone to attend is definitely a step in the right direction because, as Steve said, it's all there, there's complete transparency, and there can be follow-up, and you can ask questions about why people voted a certain way. So that's definitely a good way to do it, although, like I said, you can't guarantee it, but open meetings is a good way to start. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Margaret.
Thank you. I can only tell you how I am on city council and with respect to honesty, is that when I do my research for an agenda item, I do not get on the phone and call other council members. I could probably count on my hand, in the past four years, the times that I have discussed with a council member outside of a council meeting about any issue on that agenda. I like to do the research. I like to go out into the community, see what the community thinks about the issue, and then I like to sit back at a city council meeting and listen to the debate. That's what I like to do. And it's from that debate where I pick up other arguments from fellow council members. They might have a better position, they may have come up with something different than I, but what I try to do is to keep that debate in the public forum as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Lori.
Thank you. As Amber said, there's no way you can 100% guarantee the honesty of the people who are elected to council. That's why we do our research and our homework on our council members, make sure we make the best choice. The fact that these meetings are taped and they are on YouTube, nobody can go back and say, "Hey, I never said that" because it's there. So there are things in place to make sure that people, it keeps people honest with the open meeting forum.
Thank you, Lori. Lisa.
Obviously, it's important to have this. I think people are tired of nationally and in the state, wondering what is real and what is not, and what is the truth and what is not. I'm frustrated with it. I'm tired of it, and everybody is. Transparency in government is one of the most important things to me, one of the things that I am most interested in running for city council. That's why I talk a lot about having more ability to have two-way conversations so that you can answer honestly to the residents and the businesses. So again, you can't guarantee it, but I think it's one of the most important things, and I think that it's something we need to get back to in our city, state, and national level.
Thank you, Lisa. Jim.
Honesty and integrity are two of the most important qualities that a council member should have going in because we are representing the people, and we need to do what the people want us to do. But there's no way to ensure that will happen because a lot of people, a lot of politicians, go in saying one thing, and then, once they get in there, they have their own personal agenda. The best way to ensure honesty is to go over there, talk to the candidates, their meet-and-greets, talk to people who they know, look about in the community, see what you can find out. And for me, you can even go back and check and see with friends and family from where I lived at before and find out who I am. I am a person that is of high integrity and honesty. I do what I say, and I say what I mean. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And Dana.
Thank you. Integrity, morals, those are things that a council person has to have, and the willingness to stand there when somebody wants to say you did something wrong and to take it. Accountability. Accountability is really big, and if you're going to be a city council person, you have to be willing to be accountable for every word that you speak, for every statement that you do, and for every thing you put out of yourself out there. Accountability, and that's one way to keep transparency in this council. You have to be accountable for everything. That is really big. It's really heavy. And when you work in volunteerism, you have to be accountable. You have to be accountable for the safety of the people that come to your organization. You have to be accountable for the safety of the people that you work with who are volunteering. So a council member needs to be accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Okay, we have time for a couple more questions. I know I've still got a big stack here, so try to get through a couple more as quick as possible. All right. "As a mother of a 20-year-old and a 17-year-old, I'm constantly urging them to become familiar with and involved in their local and larger governments. I think their experiences and stressors are unique to their generation, and therefore, I believe their skills and ideas are invaluable. What do you see as the role of youth in the growth and development of our city, and how will you or how have you connected with them in your work on the council?" Amber, we'll start with you.
Great, thank you. That is a great question. That's a great question, and I completely agree. Our youth do need to be involved and should be involved as much as possible. With a 17-year-old and a 20-year-old, there's a lot of opportunity in this town. One place that I would definitely recommend is this library here. We have the Friends of the Library, which is generally an adult volunteer group. We have the Friends Club that was created, and it's for kids. They're the ones that created the Little Free Library in McCatty Park. We now have two high schoolers on the Friends of the Library board to help us go in directions that the youth feel that we should go in. So there are many volunteer opportunities in this town, and you can, obviously, you can go to city council meetings and watch those and be involved that way, and through student council and those sort of... student council and those sort of things at school as well.
Thank you, Amber. Margaret?
Thank you. I think there's many opportunities for our youth to engage in activities other than substance abuse, vaping, Facebook rants. I think we have to look at what is now being called the broken culture, and we have to look for ways to bring those youth into an environment that is positive, reflects good moral character, and what a better way than to get them involved in local government. And we have to play an active role in doing that. I work with youth. I also participate in the South Lyon Youth Assistance and go to that awards ceremony. And I want to make sure that the youth that are out there are rewarded, are applauded for everything that they're doing that are positive. So we need to provide. We are part of the solution. We can be part of the solution. And that's exactly what I try to do in encouraging the youth to get involved in politics. It's an alternative to the other things that are out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Lori?
Well, I think we've already kind of started a step towards getting the youth involved by the schools making it part of their, I don't know if it's extra credit or what, by attending council meetings. I've seen a lot of good questions come from the kids that go to that, but we should be encouraging them to go to other meetings as well, like Parks and Rec, get their input through some of the local things for, and I'm talking teenagers here, not, you know, the 20 to 30, 25-year-olds, but get them involved in, you know, what do you want to see in our parks? What do you want to see in our downtown? I think if we involve them a little bit more in that, sometimes I think we're a little too dismissive with the young people because we're adults and we know better. That's not necessarily true all the time. I think we could take some of their suggestions and actually put some effort into looking into them, make them feel a little more included.
Thank you, Lori. Lisa?
Thank you. When my kids first became eligible to vote, I actually sat them down and we took an online quiz. It was a pretty extensive quiz to really help them figure out what they really thought about issues. I think some, too many times, kids think they know what they think, and sometimes they've just been told what they think. And it was really enlightening to do this. And it really made us, you know, we had great discussions and figuring out what we thought about things, and it was a great back and forth. I would really encourage all, I would encourage everybody to do that with their kids, but I think it would also, and then they could find like-minded activities and they could get involved. But I think it might be a really neat thing to do as a city council to encourage that, not just have the kids come and see a meeting, but even have a government class in and do something like that and help them figure out what are the policies that they really believe in and how can we help, how can we help with that. Our kids in this town are amazing. They're more in touch, more socially compassionate, and more active than any group I've ever seen. We need to recognize that more, encourage their input, and harvest their energy.
Thank you, Lisa. Jim?
First and foremost, as a parent, you have to set the example. The kids are going to do what we do, and they're not going to do what we don't do. So we need to be volunteering in our community, in our neighborhoods, and show them that this is something good. We also need to work with the community, other people who are like ourselves in the same situation, to build incentives for the kids. A lot of the kids these days have gone to online social sites, like gaming sites, and they engage in things that we don't want them to engage in, in language we don't want them to engage in, and we're having a difficult time getting them away from that. What they need are incentives, things to do, volunteer, get them to volunteer, and show them how good it feels to do all these things instead of just sitting and focusing on themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Dana?
I almost feel like this is in my wheelhouse. I raised three children in this community who are firefighters and paramedics. They were firefighters here in the city. One of the main things that we had to do per month is my children had to give me 10 hours of volunteer work, and I left it up to them to figure out what their passion was. As a parent that lived in, as a parent in this city and as a grandparent, my grandson also has to give me volunteer time. At the Memorial Day Parade, he volunteered by handing out American flags to veterans. I was very proud of him. I think as a parent, you have to invest and you have to look around all the great activities and push your child towards that. Say, here are the options for you. And then as a city, we need to help that child be supportive. My kids learned a lot, and they still give back every day to not only our community, our community, but other communities in which they work in. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. And Steve?
I think we can probably do a better job of capitalizing on the input from the youth in this city, and I think there are things that we can do to encourage them, get them involved in some of the, some of the boards and commissions that we have in the city where we lack membership, get some fresh ideas into the Parks and Rec Commission for one, look at the ways in which we can develop the recreational facilities in this town. I would encourage them to get more involved in some of the volunteer events that we have here in town that take place every year, whether it's the Lake Street Cruisin', whether it's the Pumpkin Fest event, whatever. I mean, these are all great opportunities to become an integral cog in the city and understand what your role is in this community.
Thank you, Steve. Okay. All right, next question, I'm actually going to combine two questions because they both deal with communication. "The city has a website but does not have an official Facebook page and does not issue monthly online newsletters. How do you propose improving communications with the citizens? And related, how do you know what the people really want, not just a select few?" And we'll start with you, Margaret.
Thank you. I think we always have to look at these issues that come up with respects to social media in terms of improving our communication with our residents. How I do it, how I go out, I think everybody knows, I am not out there on social media. I'm off the grid, and I have some very specific reasons for that. But I do it the old-fashioned way. I sit down and I talk to people, I look at them in the face, look in their eyes, shake their hand, and I make sure that I have that conversation with people in the public. I am out at least four times a week, and I'm gathering information on what people in this community are interested in, whether it's at the grocery store, whether it's at the library, the gas station, whether it's at an event here in town. I am never home, but that's okay because what I am doing is going out and gathering that information that I feel is important that I bring with me to city council meetings. So I think there's a lot of opportunities for improvement in our communication skills, but I'm just an old-fashioned gal, and that's how I'm going to deal with my communication in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Lori?
Thank you. In the past, we had, used to put out quarterly newsletters. They kind of fell by the wayside probably about eight or 10 years ago, after Mr. Cook retired from City Hall. Those were always very informative. We used to always, we also used to send out community surveys. Yeah. And those were always, and they were random, very random. It was not to all citizens. We would randomly pick addresses out of the voter, registered voter file. I think that would be a good thing to start up again as well. Facebook, you know, Maggie, a lot of people are on Facebook. I know our police department, they put out stuff daily, lets people know what's going on. Same with the fire department, and I think maybe the city hall should start doing that as well for some of the more administrative issues.
Thank you, Lori. Lisa?
I'm a director of marketing, so I am, I'm really frustrated with our website and the lack of communication. I go onto the website and our mayor, who's been our mayor for two years, isn't on it. That's frustrating to me, and it's because people need information and they need the right information, and they need to be able to have a place to go where they can get it. And then that's where they, where they go to get it, but you also have to push it out. Social media, it can be good and bad, but people are on, people are on social media. I, as frustrating as it is, I will read all the posts on all the different social media things, and you know what I'm talking about, but that's the way you kind of test the temperature of what's going on. We all kind of know what's going on by watching those things. But I also think that in-person communication is important, too. I've been knocking on a lot of doors, and that's been awesome. I've met a lot of people and I've heard a lot, about a lot of issues. So I think all of that is important. I think you have to combine those things.
Thank you, Lisa. Jim?
Communication between the city and the public is extremely important. That is something that I actually miss from when I came from Oak Park. There was a lot of communication between the city and the residents. We got, we received annually a calendar from the city that had lots of information, and it was fully funded by the businesses in the city. I think what's important here is to get together with the private establishments that are in the city and establish relationships with them to establish, to set up communication paths and to connect it all together and use the city as an umbrella to connect that together. We do need to be on Facebook and other social media. Unfortunately, that's going to require resources, and just like we are all busy in our work lives, so are the staff right now. So if we're going to get into social media and fund it as a city, it's going to require resources from somewhere.
Thank you, Jim. Dana?
Social media is where a lot of people get a lot of their information, and some of it is good, some of it is bad. One of the things that I remember when I was growing up is some of the local politicians would sit at the bakery, or they'd sit at a local restaurant, and you could sit down and talk to them and talk to them directly. I think if I get on city council, I really want to do that again. Go in downtown, put it on social media, come see me, come sit with me, tell me what's going on, let me see what your needs are. I think that's one way, and I think social media and us putting out, not only just our website, but a letter, I think a letter once a month of all the things going on, the sales in our businesses, what's our water department's doing, what our department, our police department's doing, that you can sit down in the evening and read like a newspaper. Unfortunately, our newspaper doesn't give us a lot of that information anymore because it, it kind of comes around all different communities. You have to pick and choose, so.
Thank you, Dana. Steve?
This actually is one of those 13 items that's in the budget for this year. The city manager was challenged with improving the functionality of the city's website, adding capabilities that you find in other municipal websites that ours lacks at this particular point. In addition, he was also tasked with establishing a more cohesive Facebook-type presence where the other Facebook sites under the police department, fire department, would all fall under the same umbrella, so you would have the consistency of a presentation and also the message that was being pushed out to the residents. So it's in the budget. He's been tasked with doing it. We'll see how the results turn out.
Thank you, Steve. Amber?
Thank you. I believe the question was, how can we improve communication to the public and find out what people actually want? And one of the ways to find out what people want is to help them figure out what they want. And we can do that through in, being more informative with the public. At last night's city council meeting, two of the judges, Judge Law and Judge Reed, were there to present, hey, this is what we do on a daily basis, come visit us, our doors are always open. It was really nice to see them there and to find out that this is one way that people can be more informed, and anyone can do that. So it's one way to not only communicate, but to help people figure out what it is they want. The Cable Commission quarterly puts out Spotlight on South Lyon interviews with people that have been on city council as well as other people who lead volunteer organizations, which is a great way to get communication out there, and we've also talked about having Bob Donahue and the city manager do that.
Thank you, Amber. I'm going to try to squeeze in two more questions from the audience, and then we'll have the chance for your final statements. All right, first question. "How many council meetings have you attended prior to running for city council, and attended in person? If you haven't attended any, why not? And if your job or other obligations interfered with that, how will that change if you're elected?" And Lori, we'll start with you.
Well, I've been to several as an employee of the city, and even before I was in that office, we'd come up to a few of them, not very many. I kind of like going to them. They're very, they're a little bit different. I guess I don't know how to articulate this, but what you see on TV sometimes isn't the feel for the meeting while you're there. So I think it's really good to go to these in person rather than watch them all on YouTube.
Thank you. Lisa?
I don't know if I could count them. It's been several years, but I know that especially, starting about two years ago, when my kids went to a city council meeting and came home and they were a little shocked by what they saw, I really started paying attention to city council meetings, and I did watch them online. But I also have attended several in the past. I'd say maybe 10, I would say. But mostly, I have watched them online, but really been paying attention to what's going on more specifically over the last two years.
Thank you. Jim?
I attended four meetings in person, although I've been watching city council meetings on Channel 19 and online since just about when I started here. That was one of the first things I looked for is the public, community channel. Prior to coming here, I watched probably half the meetings of the Oak Park City Council. I've probably watched half, if not most, of the meetings here in South Lyon since I've been here and since I decided I was going to be a candidate for council, I've actually been going back to the previous meetings, looking to see what the pattern has been and what the interests of the city have been and what's been going on that has led the city to where it is now.
Thank you. Dana?
Forty years of living in a community and 30 of it really strongly being a part of the community in a volunteer aspect. I've attended a lot of city council meetings. I've had the great opportunity of knowing some of the mayors personally and some of the city managers personally. I watch a lot of them online, yes, I do, because fortunately, part of my job, I wasn't able to make it on Monday evenings. But now my life has changed, as I, as we can all see, a lot of our lives are changing, and that is what's been catalyzing me to go to almost all the city council meetings in the last three months, except for the last one I had my grandson. They're, they do, they have a different feel. What you see on TV is completely different than what you are feeling in the room. When a statement is made, it can be miscreed or made different on the TV as it is in the room when you're sitting there.
Steve?
As I mentioned before getting on city council, I attended the meetings for probably two and a half to three years, so I'm going to estimate it at probably 60 to 70 meetings that I sat in and observed what the council was doing before getting appointed to the vacancy on the council. And as has been said, attending that session in person gives you a whole new perspective versus being able to just watching it on YouTube or on the cable channel. I realize you can't fast forward while you're sitting in the audience, but there's a whole lot more to pick up while you're sitting there. And actually, we have a number of, a couple of people right here in the audience right now that are, attend our sessions pretty regularly, and I compliment them for doing that so that they really understand what's going on in the city.
Thank you, Steve. Amber?
I joined the Cable Commission over five years ago, and I had been attending the city council meetings for a couple of years before that on a pretty regular basis, so I would say it's been about seven, at least seven years that I've been going, and I probably go to at least, well, maybe half of them in person, I think, and I would echo what has already been said. It's, it's definitely worth going and being there in person. You do get a different feel, and you get a closer feel to, and you get to know people better that are in the community. You see the same folks over and over, and it's how I've met quite a few people in this, in this town.
Thank you, Amber. And Margaret?
Yes, prior to me being elected to city council in 2015, I came to city council meetings, and I definitely went to that microphone because I had something to say usually when I was there, and I still have something to say usually at city council meetings. So, but my attendance, if you're looking for attendance, since I have been elected and sitting on council for about four years, I think that I have only missed maybe one or two meetings a year, and I strategically try to make sure that those meetings are meetings that have very little non-substance type issues that are on the agenda. So I'm fully committed to attending council meetings.
Thank you. Okay. All right, last question. "What will you do to ensure the highest safety of the people you are representing?" And Lisa, we'll start with you. And Lisa, we'll start with you.
That's an excellent question. I, I guess, I, I would say working with the, the police and the, the chief to make sure that our, our force is, you know, that we have the people, that we have the right equipment. We have the best that we can afford to, to give to our, our police force. And I guess maybe also just kind of encourage people, and when people say, you see something, say something. I think we can encourage that a lot more and to have people to look out for each other as well.
Thank you, Lisa. Jim?
It starts with the police force. Our police force has to be the best, has to be well-staffed. We need to constantly reevaluate how much resources we're focusing on our police force to ensure that our standards that we establish as a community are met. And the number one standard would be safety, public safety. But also, at the same time, we, we need to consider and encourage neighborhood groups, watch groups of people, citizens in the neighborhoods to go around and make sure they're available, make sure that they know what's going on in the neighborhood collectively as a group. And we also need to encourage our police departments to focus on the neighborhoods just as much as they focus on everything else. They need to be driving through the neighborhoods and maybe every now and then get out of the car and just walk around and get to know the people. I'm sorry, I may, may have watched too many old black and white movies of Officer Malone, but I think we need to go back to those days.
Thank you, Jim. Dana?
Hi. Our police, our fire, our EMS, and our dispatch, they are top-notch. They are very well-trained. They go to regular training meetings or sessions. They have a working relationship with the townships around us. They have a mutual aid pact. We also have a hazmat pact with Oakland County. We have a lot of really great opportunities and really great things going on in our city when it comes to our public safety. Our new fire chief, he is innovative. He is ready to work and he's excited about a bell that he found out about. We have a new police chief who is intelligent, who has grown up in this committee, in this community and has worked his way up to where he is today. We have a new city manager who works well with our departments. We have a new water department head that works well with our departments. Right now, City of South Lyon is one of the safest community in the top 20. I think there's nothing we can say more about that.
Steve?
To ensure the safety of the community, I think we, we need to continue what we've been doing for the last couple of years. We've worked very closely with the police department, fire department, to make sure they have the equipment so that they can operate and perform their jobs in a safe and reliable manner. That means having the patrol vehicles they need, having the ancillary equipment that they need. We just approved the replacement of the Jaws of Life for the, the fire department. We're going to approve in, in dash cameras and most likelihood, we're going to discuss that next, next council meeting. Don't want to get ahead of ourselves there. But, you know, we make sure that those departments have the tools they need, that they have the, the best quality tools to do the job and do the job properly and do the job safely. And it provides the safe environment for the residents as a result of doing that.
Thank you, Steve. Amber?
I agree with what's been said. We definitely need to continue to support our fire department, our police department, give them both the equipment and the training that they need and keep their, their buildings maintained and their equipment maintained. Another way I think is it's important to get public feedback on when people feel that there is something that is unsafe in our community, making sure they have a way to let us know. I don't know if this is going to be implemented, but it would certainly be a good idea. There are other communities that use the website or an app on their phone where they can let people, let the government know, hey, there's a tree down or there's a sign down or there's, there's a light that's out, this kind of thing. So we need more feedback and easier ways for the public to give us feedback on what needs to be addressed from a safety perspective.
Thank you, Amber. Margaret?
Thank you. With respect to safety, high safety for the city, I am a very, very staunch supporter of law enforcement. Unfortunately, we're living in a changing world and I think we see that almost every day on the news, whether it's both at the state level or at the national level. Every time an agenda item comes up that votes for or requires additional safety equipment or funding for either the police department or the fire department, I am there and I make sure that I give that vote. Additionally, for high safety in the city, we are very fortunate to have a chief of police that is now out in the community with public relations. That hasn't been done before. That is part of your safety program. Additionally, you have civic participation. Civic participation is absolutely necessary if you are going to have a safe community. So I think all three of those components work together and that's why we have the result and the success that we do today with respect to safety in our city.
Thank you, Maggie. Lori?
As far as the public safety goes, we're talking about the police and the fire department. I believe is, we've got a great group of guys there. They're all very, all certified in what they do. As we're going to maintain the safety of our neighborhoods and our residents, we need to make sure that they get the continuing education and training to keep on top of the newest and latest and greatest, keep updating our technology within the cars, the police force, and the, the fire department. And as Steve mentioned, make sure that they have the tools that they need to do the job. But in addition to that, I think we need to get to know our neighbors a little bit better. I know with our small group on our street, somebody goes on vacation, hey, I'm just letting you know, I'm not going to be home. Can you watch the house? Or things of that nature. I think we can all do a little bit ourselves to help keep ourselves safe.
Thank you, Lori. Okay, that will conclude the audience questions portion of the night. I apologize for the dozen or so questions that I, we didn't have a chance to get to, but we need to get things wrapped up pretty soon. The South Lyon area cable TV will have the recording of this up on social media as well as on Channel 19 for WOW subscribers by the end of tomorrow evening. A reminder that we will be doing this again with the two candidates for mayor on Thursday, 7:00 PM here at the library, again, the Salem South Lyon District Library. And also for more resources, the League of, the League of Women's Voters Oakland area does have the Q and A with candidates on their website at LWVOA.org. And with that, we will give each of the candidates a minute for a concluding statement. And Jim, we will start with you.
Thank you. Tonight, you've heard from many wonderful candidates, some wonderful things. They all bring a lot to the table. They all bring experience and community involvement. I also have a lot to bring as well, though I'm new to the community. Because of my, the work, type of work I've done, I bring rationality, insight, and innovation to the table. Because of the type of person I am, I also bring dedication, communication, commitment, and vision. Because of how my life has been from the beginning, I am a very honest, self-sacrificing person. I put community, friends, and family above myself. And I have very little to show personally, other than what I've done for others. Try to be simple and humble and as giving as I can in life. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Dana?
Thank you. Being a part of the city and being a part of the community, pretty much my entire life has allowed me to meet new friends, stay with old friends, see different parts of our community and work in different avenues. I am a hard worker. I'm here saying I'm ready to roll up my sleeves, work hard for the citizens of South Lyon, be accountable for what's going on in our city, and not look back. We have to embrace our past, but we have to look forward to our future and we have to take that future and we have to turn it into something where people know that this is where South Lyon is. I can remember a time when there was, nobody knew where South Lyon was. Nobody knew who we were. Now they do. Now they know who we are. We, they know where we're at. I think it's time. I think it's time that I really start standing up for the city and fighting for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Steve?
As a, as a current city council member, I would hope that you, you know what you're going to get. You're going to get what you've gotten. And, and hopefully you're satisfied with the performance that you've experienced for the couple of years that I've been on, on council. Hopefully, the provided information that we had here tonight will help all voters with their decision. I would also hope that everyone will take advantage of other resources as well, such as watching the tapes from the, the proceedings, the council meetings, discussing the candidates with your friends and neighbors, okay? And making an informed decision on November 5th. I'm hoping I'll be one of your three choices to continue moving the South Lyon forward for the coming four-year period. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Amber?
I would again like to thank the library for having us here tonight. This is a great opportunity for us to discuss our views and get, let the public get to know us a little bit better and make a more informed decision in November, which is wonderful. And thank you to the League of Women Voters as well for their support. I am very much looking forward to an opportunity to be on city council and to bring the, the community involvement that I've had and the, the network that I've, that I've made in this town with the people that I know to help continue move, moving the city forward with the progress we've made with, with our new city manager and our relatively new mayor. We've, we've really made a lot of progress and I would love to be part of that to continue moving us forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Margaret?
Thank you. I have thoroughly enjoyed the last four years sitting on city council. It's been an incredible, incredible, incredible journey. It's been a great ride. There's been some detours along the way, but you know what? I always say about detours, embrace them in life because you'll learn from them and you'll move forward. What a success this city is today. How excited I am about the fire that is burning in the DDA. And I don't mean that literally. I'm talking about the businesses in town that are excited about being here in South Lyon. Because finally, finally, they're beginning to see their potential. I want another four years. I want to be able to continue with the downtown. I want to be able to continue with progress on the city budget. And I clearly, clearly hope that we will be able to begin to transition some of our recreational parks into absolute great venues for recreation. That's very, very important to me the next four years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maggie. Lori?
Well, tonight's certainly been an interesting, interesting experience for me. As you can see, public speaking is not my forte, but I'll try to get better at that. I do believe, though, with my background with the city, especially with the city finances, I, I do know a lot about it. I know a lot of what it takes to put a budget together. There's a lot of time, energy, research, a lot of reading, a lot of writing that has to go into it. I know what it takes to do that. I'm well aware of all the city operations and how they function. I'm on pretty good terms with all the department heads and the city manager. With that being said, I, I do think I'm a good candidate, but we have seven people up here. Each and every one of us would make a good council member. So please, people, get out there and vote. Do your research, do your homework, figure out which, which of us fits your best thought of what needs to be in a, as a council member.
Lisa?
I want to say thank you to everybody in the audience for coming, listening, or participating. It is really exciting to see how much interest there has been in this election. So you've heard from all of us today and we are extremely fortunate in this election to have this many qualified candidates. I loved listening to everybody because I have decisions to make, too. I, I need to vote for two other people, if I vote for myself, that is. I know I'm new to this political thing. I know I've made a few missteps. I may have stumbled a bit and apparently my signs look like they say DTE on them. But don't make, don't mistake that for my inability to do this job. I have the time, the energy, the passion for South Lyon, the leadership skills, energy to be a good council member. And the promise I'll leave you with is if you vote for me, I will work hard every day to make sure you don't regret it.
Thank you, Lisa. And with that, we'll conclude the evening. I want to thank everyone here in the audience for coming out tonight. I appreciate all your, your questions. I think they're great. Thank you very much to all the candidates for taking some time in, in talking with the residents about the issues. I appreciate it. Good luck with the rest of your campaign. And that will conclude tonight's event and we will see you all on Thursday. Thank you.[1794.13][1794.13]